Good evening, everyone in the audience and at home. Welcome, on behalf of the City Council, to the Monday, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, City Council Meeting Caucus. It's at the caucus juncture that we, as a deliberative body, have an opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves each of the agenda items for today's agenda to air out any concerns, questions, or any problems, or support, whatever. And to that end, looking at the agenda, items from the beginning until and inclusive of item number seven, Departmental or Court Administrative. So we can start with communications from division and department heads. Item number eight is a request on the City Controller for a council approval to approve four individuals to attend an ICOM conference. Any council member have any questions or any concerns about item number eight? It's an annual thing, sometimes more than just once. It's a productive seminar that helps us all be better in our respective positions. And the council members and department heads coming back are usually very energized and informed, and usually come back with additional information for all of us. Item number nine is from our city attorney, request City Council approve our annual Stop DWI agreement. Rick, Jude, anything on item number nine?
That's pretty standard. I think we do this every year. So it's just kind of a council approval for the program that's continued every year involving state funding for our Stop DWI program run by the Police Department.
Thank you. Anyone from the council have any, anything on item number nine? Item number ten again from the city attorney, request City Council approve proposed agreement between city and New York State Unified Court System. The Unified Court System rents space from the city, the city hall relative to court space, office space, and so on and so forth. And that is what this agreement is. Am I correct, Rick?
Yes, another standard document that we do from time to time with the Office of Court Administration, who runs our court program through the state and uses our facilities. So they subsidize us in terms of rent, utilities, staffing, things of that nature.
Thank you. Any council member have any issues or any concerns, questions on item number ten? Item eleven, again from the city attorney, request City Council approve agreement from Wendell to update our local waterfront revitalization program. Quite frankly, I didn't know we in Lakewanna had a local waterfront revitalization program. It's admitted, but I do. To that end, I did call Rick Jude and spoke with him today regarding that. Rick, would you be kind enough to tell everybody up to speed on that item?
Okay, so I'm not an engineer, and I've never dealt with our local waterfront revitalization program. But if you look in our city charter, there are sections that govern this. I'm thinking it's state mandates involving seeker and development of our waterfront, as well as providing access to our waterfront. And Wendell Engineers are the engineering company, which in this area does a lot of that for several municipalities. We have a state grant now to upgrade our, upgrade our program with the state. And they basically help us to comply with the state law that governs that type of activity in terms of access and cleaning not only of the Lake Erie corridor, but of the Smokes Creek corridor. So that's really what it's involving. I do want to point out that the contract that Wendell has bid on was a contract that was put out for public bid initially, and they were chosen. And I think they're known in this area for this type of work. So nobody, everybody kind of stays away from them. But the good thing in this contract is we have a state grant for fifty thousand dollars, and their bid is for fifty thousand dollars. So it's fully reimbursable, and they will help us update the, whatever needs to be updated in terms of the city, in terms of access and complying with the state law. And I will make sure that the council gets a copy of the report that they issue at the conclusion of their work.
Here, thanks so much.
Mr. Council President, can I?
Yep.
One more question.
Oh, there you go.
And to that end, do you know if that is in conjunction with, in support of, or in addition to what the county has been doing? And there was a meeting recently at St. Anthony's Hall, I believe, regarding access to the waterfront.
Yeah, and Mr. Clark can answer that.
I can answer that. So this is one of the projects that the mayor's asked me to pick up while we're in the internal but looking for a development director. So LWRP should come in with me, if I may. So Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, that's what the LWRP stands for. It's the ability of a municipality to localize a statewide-run program that takes care of four different areas for municipalities that are near waterfronts. Climate change mitigation, restoration and flood risk mitigation, open space land conservation, and water quality. Okay, so there's four areas that an LWRP could encompass. To your question, the state is coming into the Bethlehem Steel Complex with remediation for the back five hundred acres that would include passive recreation. So LWRP and any funding that comes outside of that is a complement to that program. The LWRP we have in place right now is decades old. There was a draft put out in two thousand and eighteen that never went further than a draft. And what puts a municipality at an advantage or a disadvantage is the ability to have a well-articulated plan. So that when, for example, programs like the Bond Act, which has recently been put out by New York State, there's over a billion dollars in funding available to municipalities. Your entry into those programs are a well-articulated LWRP. Doesn't mean you're going to win, doesn't mean you're going to give. But take Smokes Creek, for example, and the flooding issues that many people in this community deal with. To have an opportunity to bid on or to secure grant funding that may come up through the state or even federal programs, to have the LWRP we have in place today, we'd lose by a mile because it still references, for example, some of the operations of the Bethlehem Steel Complex that were in existence after they stopped steelmaking. So it's incumbent upon the city to update that document, not just from an exercise standpoint, but to be able to be in competition for things like development grants for the waterfront. And if, for those of you who were at the event the other day where you heard me reference DRI programs and connectivity into the city, it's also connectivity into those types of programs as well. So without the LWRP, we're sort of behind the eight ball a lot in terms of being able to compete with other communities like Lakewanna who are coming in for the statewide money. And a billion dollars sounds like a lot, but when you're bringing in all kinds of municipalities that have, you know, myriad projects that they haven't gotten done over the decades either, it's a competitive environment. So it's a complement to the Bethlehem Development, but there are many other programs that I'm still learning about that kind of encapsulate around and support those types of programs, like the one at the Bethlehem Complex that we need to get in the lane for. And without the LWRP, we're not in that lane.
Now, along those same lines, Chuck, this is a request to update our local waterfront revitalization program. Do we have a dated or outdated waterfront revitalization program?
Very outdated. The last one that's out there is at least twenty years old. The last one that was published is at least twenty years old. There was a draft as recent, well, it's not recent. The last draft was two thousand and eighteen, but it never went from a draft to final state. So even what's in that draft in two thousand and eighteen is far different than what the waterfront looks like today with the Bethlehem plans. I'm sure at that time, the Commerce Park obviously was conceptually in motion because that was a Poland-Carpers-driven initiative from two thousand and twelve. But things like passive recreation may have only been an infant discussion at that time. It may not have even been anywhere near the level of conversation it is today. Canal Side, for example, was only in its infancy back in two thousand and eighteen. You know, it was just starting to evolve a little bit. So a lot of the things that you would connect into that probably need to be up. That's one of the reasons that the update is necessary.
And who generated that proposal?
Can I interject here? I was on a committee, me and Mr. Ingram and a few other people. We put a lot of work into it.
There was a lot of work into it.
And Wendell did it. So I think we ought to see where that, why we never got it. I thought we had it.
Well, they did a draft.
They did a draft.
Well, I know, but then they sent it to the state or the federal government. It takes like eighteen months for them to prove it. And we never, I didn't realize we never got it.
It never, it never, it never came back in final state.
There was a lot incorporated. I don't know if you guys read all that stuff. They had public meetings, public input. They had wanted St. Anthony's, they had wanted Senior Center. I was pretty much instrumental in. Smokes Creek was only part, was there to the bridge or there to the railroad tracks. I had, I insisted that the whole creek in Lakewanna be incorporated because we own land behind automakers. Like, who knows what people put up, fishing out with it or public access to the creek and stuff like that. It was pretty elaborate. So I think we ought to look into what happened, why we never got that. Wendell, Wendell did it.
So councilman, is it fair to assume that you're volunteering to help Chuck in this endeavor?
Not this time.
No.
Oh, well, I'll help him, yeah.
So, so the council member brings up a good point. It's an outstanding point. This isn't Wendell, three engineers sitting in a room crafting a document. There is a very elaborate public input commentary involvement process that they facilitate, very similar to the public meeting that you are aware of at St. Anthony's. I don't know if it necessarily will be as extensive as that, but there is public involvement, municipal input, council input. It'll come from a lot of different places because ultimately, at the end of the day, the LWRP is supposed to be our document. It's our roadmap to how we want to localize any waterfront development or where our needs are. You know, how would the state know, you know, really where we want that funding to go? We need to drive that bus. So the first step is engaging Wendell so that they could, you know, and we'll get an answer to that question because I don't have a clue why the two thousand and eighteen one. No, I understand, I understand you're not. It's a great question, no, it's a phenomenal question. So we'll find out about that. But most importantly, to move it forward, we've got to engage the contract to let them begin their work because as the council member has said, it's an extensive process.
It's a mixed party, you're in.
Exactly, exactly. And that point is valid because these award programs have started already. Some of these programs are out there, and they're multi-year programs. So it's not like you're one and done. But Bond Act, several year programs. There's going to be other programs that come out and get launched by the state. And the faster we can get the LWRP updated, ready to go, the easier it will be, you know, for us to get in competitively to these programs.
Hopefully, we can go off that waterfront five years.
I think there should be some good work to it, but there's certainly some updates that will need to be done, as council member.
Does this, does this project fund independently from the county?
Oh, yeah. This is, this LWRP update the city of Lakewanna, period.
Do they even collaborate or coordinate?
Oh, absolutely, they have to. Because ultimately, you know, whether, and obviously, if we're talking about something within, you know, east of the steel plant, like a Smokes Creek, you know, flood mitigation and things of that nature, fine. But if we're talking about Smokes Creek passive recreation, you know, going through the complex into the lake, it's a combination of things, right? So there has to be a collaboration at a minimum, you would think, with Erie County Department of Planning, and to the extent necessary, the Bethlehem redevelopment team that includes the city of Lakewanna.
So for instance, if the county says, we're ditching the program, they can no longer, something comes up, whatever the reason, and they no longer, or their project, this can still run independently?
Oh, absolutely. Because again, I'll use flood mitigation as an example. And please, I don't, I'm not implying that we've got flood mitigation money, but I'm just using that as an example. That's specific to Lakewanna. That has nothing to do with the recreation or the development of Renaissance Commerce Park. So certainly, there are things that complement, but there are many things that can stand on their own without the Commerce Park. In fact, most of this stuff would be absent of Commerce Park. Rick, did that jive with what you've learned?
Yes.
So that's the extent of what I know at the moment. I'll update more as I go along.
And Chuck, there was an indication that the city is looking or applying for a ten million dollar grant that would affect the redesign of Smokes Creek along its journey through Lakewanna. Is that part of this endeavor?
It's, it's a complement to it. So part of the whole passive recreation concept at the Bethlehem Steel Complex is an ability to reactivate Smokes Creek as a recreation site. Fishing, kayaking, things of that nature. But before you can get to that point, and again, this is the extent I know right now, I'm learning on the go as a lot of us are. There are things like, you know, bank and structure things that have to, you know, you have to mitigate the flooding, you have to stabilize. There's, you can't just have people, you know, bring kayaks and boats there in some places today because it would be a safety hazard. But part of that development would include the ability for grant money. So whether it's ten million, five million, or whatever it may be, you know, in the cycle that we qualify for, there's both a state-level look, and at some point Lakewanna will need to step up into the grant process as well to bring as much support to that along with the county and the state. Because it's a massive, it's a massive undertaking. Just even think of that little space in Bethlehem Park behind the Mulberry. Just that, you know, whatever that is, half a mile, mile stretch, you know, up to Route Five. That in and of itself is, you know, flood and a structural project in and of itself without taking the whole creek in mind. So yes, these are all intertwined, some complementary, some independent.
Councilman, we already answered that.
On the property, on Bethlehem Steel property, I had seen a rendition at one time of a park. It was south of that park, the dawn on their property. Who owns that property?
That's still up for, well, right now, that is owned by, they're in the process of transferring that from Tecumseh, which is the successor company, well, it's not the successor company. It's, it's Arsalor Matal. When they took over Bethlehem's assets, they have an entity called Tecumseh that was responsible for disposing of distressed assets. That was Bethlehem Steel. So they're in the process of moving that land, transferring that land from Tecumseh to the Buffalo and Erie County Industrial Land Corporation. That's the entity that holds the land that is now known as the Commerce Park in a land bank, if you will. And then as entities come on like TMP, like Uniland, so on and so forth, they're sold individually to those entities. They then become tax-generating properties to the city of Lakewanna County, Erie, school district, and all that.
So if a park or recreational area went in there, probably be owned by the city or still?
No, actually, we've made, we've made this, so that's a great point. Right now, the focus is on, hopefully, and again, very early conversations because that whole redevelopment is probably five to seven years out in terms of the land remediation and what that park design could look like. The conversation today is on making that a state park. But again, there's been no commitment to making that a state park. One thing that's been made very clear is that the city of Lakewanna does not have the capability to own that park, maintain that park. I mean, you literally would need a department the size of the DPW today just to take care of that park, and that's probably not possible. So they know that that's got to be a state or a county type of park. But we're years away from the concept even coming to fruition, years away from deciding what one's going to be. Exactly, Kevin, that's another, that's a great point, another great point. So, and again, that's.
I'm mad now that we put all that work, me and John, and we didn't get anything out of it.
Well, it's too early to say.
You know, Kevin, there may be more in it than we think. I know there's a lot into it, but we, you know, we'll, we'll see. We'll see where we go with it. But Mr. Council President, that's what I know right now, and I'm learning more, and as I learn more, I'll.
We're all in the light now, thank you. Any other questions? Rick, thank you for that, and Chuck especially, thank you for your, and council member serving for your input, also, thank you. I think we're all more knowledgeable for that. Moving on to item number twelve, city attorney again, request City Council approve use of parking lot. Twenty-three, strike that, twenty-eight thirty-eight South Park Avenue by the National MS Society Upstate New York for the annual MS Monster Scramble on October fifteenth at Holy Cross Cemetery. Rick, anything on that?
No, the request came through my office via email. I talked to the woman. It's my understanding it's been done before. I think it's a race through part of the cemetery. So they just asked for some additional parking. And I thought it'd be best to put it before the council for approval.
Thank you. And council members have any questions on item number twelve? We had item number thirteen from our city assessor. Excuse me, trying to get over a cold. Request City Council approval of the sale of city-owned property located at one seventy-five Ridge Road to Melissa Irizieri. Anyone have any comments or opinions on that?
Councilman, I'm interested to know a little bit more about the proposal. I know it may be definitely that we have requests today. There is mention of planting flowers and things of that nature. I would like to request to have this table and to have some more information on what the potential goals are for this particular parcel of land. So I'd like to ask my council peers to consider table and get to their ideas.
I think you raise a very good issue. That's a prime piece of property on a corner, could be used for future development. So I tend to agree that maybe we should have a better understanding of what the potential is for that property before we dispose of it. All right, anyone else have any comments?
Yes, if I may, I concur with the help on the flag. I'm not crazy about selling lots like that on one of our prime streets for planting flowers. Doesn't look that bad now. I mean, it's been off the tax rolls since two thousand and seven. I think it'd be wise to look into it, wait, maybe get a building in a few years. I'm out for.
All right, thank you.
Table.
Unless there's anything else, let's take items fourteen and fifteen together again from the city assessor. A request from Community Health Center of Buffalo to purchase two vacant lots, two thirty-one and two twenty-nine Ridge Road. Those vacant lots are right next to the store to the old M and T Bank on Ridge Road in the first ward that was used as a clinic by Catholic Health, which recently closed. The intent by Community Health Center of Buffalo is to reopen that location for, again, as a health center to service our folks in the first ward primarily. And I'd just like to say this, there's a couple conflicting issues here in, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion. First of all, I'm not in favor of taking taxable vacant property off the tax rolls and seeing it become non-taxable by virtue of a tax-exempt organization taking title to it, takes it off the tax rolls, and then that is done. In addition to that, there are conflicting efforts here. I know that Mount Olive was looking at their effort to put up a health center next to the Mount Olive Church. I don't know where that stands as of today. And although they may be conflicting efforts, in the meantime, we do need, I think, to see a healthcare center. The sooner the better for our constituents in the first ward. And by virtue of taking those small lots off the tax rolls, the way I'm looking at it is this. First of all, there's been no interest in anyone purchasing those vacant lots. I'm, the number that came to mind is for the last twenty years, they're very narrow lots. Secondly, if Community Healthcare Buffalo, if their arrangement to reopen that health center, closed health center at the old M and T Bank is contingent on being able to expand on those two vacant lots, then our impetus, in my opinion, would be to cooperate with that endeavor from at least from the mere token that if the deal falls through with Catholic dioceses of Buffalo for that property, and Community Healthcare Buffalo still must have come into Lakewanna, and they buy another vacant piece of property that is larger, that vacant piece of property that may be larger for them to build on would also become tax-exempt. So this is the lesser of the, of an impact, as far as I'm concerned. In my way of thinking, to the city of Lakewanna, the potential tax loss revenues that may result if we go this route. So my opinion would be that I would be in favor of.
Yes, I don't have all the information on this, but from my conversation with, I believe, the mayor and Deborah Skolski is that the purchaser of this property is going to do some improvements and expansion, and they wanted that one lot on the side. It's not that big for some additional parking. Whether that's a hundred percent true, I don't know, but I think that's the gist of it. So it's part of their overall plan to improve that property to some extent for whatever uses they intend to use it for.
Yeah, that was what was indicated.
Right.
About some time ago.
But I agree with you. You know, we've got Ridge Road frontage property. You hate to see it go for nonprofit use. Not that that's not important in the city, but we do have a lot of that already. So, but again, it's adjacent to a nonprofit, so it's a small piece. And I think if it's, if it's very, if it's very necessary for their plans, then maybe they should articulate that a little bit more for the council so that they can make an informed decision.
And thank you, Rick. But I think the overriding consideration is we do need a healthcare center there. And I think that's the overwhelming consideration.
If I may, Council President?
Yes, Council President.
We discussed this issue with the Community Neighborhood Center of Buffalo. They showed great interest in filling the gap that was left by the Catholic charities, or I'm sorry, the Catholic Health System that was at that same location. They did show interest in buying parcels of land and possibly building. However, they've admitted that this location is already familiar to the community. It is a vacant building that would be of great use to rehabilitate, an opportunity to rehabilitate. And then they do other programs as well in addition to their healthcare. They provide farmers' markets on the weekends. They do, and during the week, they do parental trainings and things of that nature that they always like to incorporate into communities. They don't just want to go in, do business, and leave. They want to invest in communities that they serve. They look to hire individuals that live in a community that have a vested interest in the community. They look to provide programs to the unique needs of certain communities, whether it's bilingual services, doctors that have a cultural sensitivity to certain demographics. They really look into the community that they serve and design their services around it. I do share an interest or concern with you when it comes to taking land off of the tax roll. However, the benefits outweigh the negatives in this situation immensely. Having access to healthcare is extremely important, especially whenever you're within a community that utilizes the busing system or walks to their local facilities for help and for aid, especially in regards to emergency healthcare. Not everyone has the luxury to hop in a car and go across town to see their doctor. And their will to provide those services locally and invest in the community locally when it comes to things outside of healthcare is their, one of their paramount decisions when going into communities. So they've, they've been in touch with myself since the day, actually, since prior to O L D actually closing, but from the time that they announced their closure. It was a big impact in our community. Many, many residents were left without healthcare and then having to commute all the way to Louisiana neighborhood. And some have admitted to me that they haven't seen their doctor since because they are unable to visit. It's not easy, and some people just give up on looking for appropriate healthcare. So although it may be a negative when we look at it from a tax rule point of view, it is extremely important, and it is a great benefit to have them come into our community and to also acquisition these two parcels of land so they can expand. They may not expand the day they move in, but it is something that they always work towards. The facility that they have right now is thousands of square feet. In some, in the city of Buffalo, they have one in Piggly Blackport in Niagara Falls, where the one. where the one in Buffalo, they didn't need to expand because it was already huge as it is. Whereas this location is much smaller and their potential to grow is, is there. They have that, they have that mindset already. They don't need to be convinced to expand. They are going to move in and rehabilitate what they have currently, but their plans to expand is what they want to do. And not guaranteeing these two parcels would limit their growth and the potential and the benefits of the community for sure.
Just to piggyback off what you said for everybody else's consumption. That M and T bank building, one of the walls of the basement is compromised structurally. It's my understanding that Community Healthcare Buffalo is aware of it and their intention is to remediate that defect. And that just adds to the commitment that they're demonstrating for, for our community and we appreciate that.
They went in knowing what was against them. They do have gas and funds, I believe in the amount of one point three million that they're going to be allocating to this project. And also as they do that, they're constantly in search of new funds and new ways, ways to improve their facility and their programs.
Mr. Councilman, can I just, one quick thing? When I heard that the Catholic health system was closing down that facility and knowing that it used to be a bank, you may recall that I came from the banking industry. And so I reached out with all the growth in La Cuenca. The first question I asked some of my bank network friends is would there ever be a desire to resurrect that site as a bank? And the question or the answer came back quickly, no. Well, it's a great spot. That building was built as a bank in an era of a different type of banking. Lot of foot traffic, many, many tellers, many manual processes. There's no ATM access in and out, or a drive-through access in and out of that building. So even though it has a history, a long history as a, as a branch, it was closed for myriad reasons, many of which was the antiquated large size of it. So if there was ever any concern by the public that gee, that maybe that could become a bank again, that building is far too big of a footprint for any bank. If you see any bank branches that get built today, they're fractions of the size of what they used to be because of the advances in technology for banking. So in the context of your decision, the likelihood of that ever becoming a bank again is less than zero.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on that particular item? If not, we'll move on. Again, there were, those were items fourteen and fifteen taken together. Item sixteen, our director of purchasing requests city council approve bid for new wave energy for gas and electric for the city. And for the city council authorized, mayor, mayor to sign and set the proposal. I believe we were made aware of this through Mr. Nick Medo, Tom Nick Medo's efforts that he did, was able to secure savings for the city if we do go this route. Anyone have any comments or questions on this item number sixteen? So moving on to item number seventeen from Director of Public Safety. Request council approved sale of old fire department vehicle, nineteen ninety-one Spartan bumper. Director Wolf, anything on that?
No, just old outdated cost of repair. They already bought a used bumper for twenty thousand and repairs on this would be over twenty five thousand dollars.
Anyone have any questions on item number seventeen? We had a communication from citizens, Kevin Pegley. I request approval to use after a state football cheerleading practice. I lack one little insurance has been provided. Kevin Pegley has been a pillar in this community, especially in regards to our kids, our children, and providing recreational opportunities for them. Anyone have any questions or issues with item number eighteen? We had item number nineteen from Denise Abbott, President Buffalo Central Labor Council. Request city council approve Yusuf Dorance Avenue and McKinley Parkway for twenty twenty-three Labor Day parade. All official plans and insurance have been filed. Great endeavor. Anyone have any questions on that? If not, there's been a request to waive the rules. The only item for that waiver is a request that came in unfortunately late from William Tagg Jr. Closure of Stony Street from one twenty-one Stony regarding the giveaway of school supplies, don't be musical entertainment, so on and so forth. Of course, those would be directed to Public Safety Director and Department of Public Works Commissioner, Mr. Sanders. Anyone have any issues on one, waiving the rules and two, entertaining this request? If not, moving on to business registrations, Nancy Brand, E B A, grand new. You hair salon, fourteen fifty-three Ever Road. Anyone have any questions or issues on that? It was approved by the various entities, agencies in the city of, under investigatory work on that. If not, then I will formally call the meeting of La Cuenca City Council for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand.
Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Before we begin with the role, I would like the city council to extend our congratulations and welcome to Grace, who is taking Jeff DeFisquali's place as our city clerk. Congratulations to her. Grace did serve as our deputy city clerk for a number of years. We congratulate her to that end. And I would ask the city clerk, please take the role.
Maflahti, President Anderson. You ready?
Here.
Sirdike.
Present.
Morano.
Here.
Department heads, Lo.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Controller.
Here.
Public Information.
Here.
Recreation is excused. Next item is hearings from citizens. We've been asked by Melissa Irazieri to address the council. Ms. Irazieri, are you present?
Um, yes, I am.
Welcome to come to the podium and address the council.
Hi.
Hi.
I was, I am the owner of the property on one seventy-nine Ridge Road down to one ninety-one. The reason why I was asking for the sign next to me was because we were looking to do like gardening and maybe eventually open up a small cafe. Not right now as of the moment to open up a cafe, but eventually down the road to open up a cafe. But that's about it. Like I own a small salon in the front and then we have the large parking lot for the customers. So that was pretty much. And then also I noticed that online, when you go up, it shows two property lines. So I was a bit confused with the one seventy-five, the address that's printed up on there. But those are my only questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Does that go all the way to Stillawana?
No, actually I thought it did go all the way to Stillawana, but it's on Zillow. It shows my parking lot and then it shows two, I guess it's one seventy-five. But then on the corner, I believe the gas station that's on Stillawana owns that little piece that's right there.
Or the billboard is?
Yes, like I guess it's from past the billboard on it's from the restaurant.
You don't mind me asking, we were just, we're kind of confused too, so.
I was super confused too, but I've just been on Zillow all night and I'm like, it's, here, I can show you. Exactly a photo.
Well, the problem is we don't know what, if Zillow was accurate or not. We have to really kind of look in.
Well, when I talked to the lady here, it kind of sounds like if the property together is one. Because when you come here and it's like one seventy-five Ridge Road, so I was assuming maybe it's together. But on Zillow, it shows like if it's one, two, three properties.
Again, we, we don't want to show.
Okay.
So we'll have to find it out.
But either way, that, that was my plan for that little middle section.
Do you own the property to the east of it or to the west of it when you're facing Ridge Road?
I want to say to the east. I'm like literally right next to the church.
You're the steel blue building?
Yes, yes.
Why does it say one seventy-nine, one ninety-one?
I don't know. It was on, I guess the previous owners bought the parking lot. I guess that used to be a building back then, so they winded up just putting it all in one when they sold your house.
Got it. So you, did you recently purchase the blue building that used to be?
Last year.
Okay, so correct me if I'm wrong, there was a sign, was it for lease or sale and now it's no longer?
It was, sorry, it took forever for me to get up there and take it down, but it was for sale forever. But we finally got that sign down.
Got it, okay. Because I didn't know if you were still looking, looking for some time.
It was a private owner, went from private owner. So it took me a while to take down the signs because they winded up sticking them up towards the third floor. But it's down now.
Climb up there.
Makes you go up in a ladder all by yourself.
Literally. But I've just been cleaning up the little area there and I was just interested in just expanding as much as I can.
Yeah, let us take a look at it, see what it entails and it may be very much that we'll table that today, but we'll take it up hopefully at the next meeting, so. And we appreciate you being here and shedding some light on that.
I'm happy to be here, yes.
Thank you for purchasing and being interested in our city.
So happy to be here.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irazieri. All right, next on the hearings from citizens, Mr. Ingram.
Couple things, I know fourteen fifteen, I know we need help for our residents, but I know Mount Olive is in the process of doing the same thing. They've been doing it for the last couple of years and have been working with Kennedy and government and have gotten funds, I think government funds to make it happen. So I would think, I would hope that you guys, before y'all make a decision, because we have like conflict here. Give Mount Olive a chance to come up here and talk about what they're doing, whatever. And here, because enough, if they're both doing the same thing, you know. And I know Mount Olive has been starting this way beforehand and they, they have met with Kennedy. Kennedy has gotten funding and they have funded, I think, Patrick Mobley and them and their team should be able to come up here and talk about when they are actually going to be starting. And I think they may start a little bit earlier, whatever, I don't want to speak for them, but I know.
Well, we were, to that end, John, we were aware and have been aware that Mount Olive has this rather large initiative. And they work to receive a substantial amount of funding in this year's New York state budget. I have gotten no notice as to whether that was part of the budget that was passed or not. So I don't know if they're going to get those funds. But there was a meeting with both Pastor Mobley, members of the council, the mayor and members of the Community Healthcare Buffalo, where we tried to get both sides to partner in this endeavor at the location and the site of the Mount Olive endeavor. My knowledge, I don't know, I believe one meeting might have been held, maybe two meetings, I'm not sure. But it didn't look like there was a meeting of the minds between Mount Olive and Community Healthcare Buffalo. So it looks like there's going to be two separate efforts to that same end, unfortunately. So it, it, it looks like the medical center at the old M and T site is going to go in regardless of what Mount Olive does. At, at, at least that's what it appears to be at this point.
Okay, I'll just make sure, just to let give them a chance to just come up and.
They're always welcome to come up here.
Secondly, as y'all know, Community Fund Day is next week on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. But on the twenty-sixth is a special day because we'll be honoring some of the local citizens for their commitment and a couple of surprises. We're looking for the council to be there, but if you can be there by twelve fifteen, we're not going to keep you long. We're not going to keep you long, but the presentations that we're presenting to those individuals are very well worth it. Very worthwhile and some of the prizes I think you'll like.
Which day, Saturday?
Saturday.
So John, let me ask you this. Orlando Taylor contact, it could be along those same lines. Is he doing this in conjunction with, with Fund Days?
No.
What is his?
I, his, he's doing.
Is that the twenty-ninth?
No, his stuff is somewhere on the twentieth. It's a lot of different stuff that just all of a sudden pops up. As you know, I've been doing some of the fund days for the last nine years. He has a different event going on, which I think is a good event, but it was a chance for the, we all didn't get, they didn't get together. We could have did it on that day.
Yeah, I thought his, his was going to be on the twenty-ninth.
I think his is on the twentieth.
Twentieth? And you remember what, what it's called? Do you remember where it's going to be located?
It's going to be, it's going, he said it's going to be in the basement, on the playground, Texas playground.
At your playground?
Yes. But again, like I said, please attend because I think you'll like it, whatever. Also, there's no seven one six, the radio station will be live streaming, live streaming that whole day. So we have a lot of activities with children and stuff like that.
Well, I know as far as the live streaming of the radio station, Director Wolf was interested in singing at that time.
We have a special, we have special things.
So I'm sure he'd be welcome to do that, right?
We couldn't back up.
Be the last sign. Anyone else have any questions for John? John, thank you very much. All right, Grace, we're going to move on with the.
Sure. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting of July tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Right, I'm going to adopt minutes of regular meeting, July tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Morano moves second, Maflahti, and to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of July tenth, twenty twenty-three as written, carried. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Maflahti, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Approval of the departmental reports, one through seven.
Right, I'm going to receive and file the departmental report, reports, ones through seven inclusive.
Maflahti seconds. Vote, Maflahti. Yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Morano. Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. Communication from division department heads. City controller requests the city council approve four individuals to attend the Nikon conference. Council member Kevin Sirdike, mayor Ifallow, assistant controller Peggy V. Nisobal, and controller Linda Highnicki.
Morano wants to approve request.
Maflahti seconds. Morano approves request, Maflahti, seconds. Maflahti, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. City attorney requests the city council approve the stop DWI agreement.
Right, I'm going to approve request.
Second, Sirdike.
Morano approves request, Sirdike seconds, the approval. Maflahti, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Carried five zero. City attorney requests the city council approve the proposed agreement between the city and the New York State Unified Court system.
Right, I'm going to approve request.
Moretti seconds.
Morano approves request, Moretti seconds. Maflahti.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Number ten's carried five zero. Number eleven, city attorney requests the city council approve the agreement from Wendell to update our local waterfront revitalization program.
Motion to approve, Sirdike.
Maflahti seconds.
Sirdike, motions to approve, Maflahti, seconds. Maflahti.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Number eleven's carried five zero. City attorney requests the city council approve the use of the parking lot at twenty-eight thirty-eight South Park Avenue by the National MS Society, upstate New York for the annual MS Monster Scramble on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at Holy Cross Cemetery.
Right, I'm going to approve request, refer to Director of Public Safety. Moretti seconds.
Morano approves request, Moretti seconds. Maflahti, yes. Anderson.
Yes.
Moretti.
Yes.
Sirdike.
Yes.
Morano.
Yes.
Number twelve's carried five zero. City assessor requests the city council approval of the sale of the city-owned property located at one seventy-five Ridge Road to Melissa Irazieri.
Maflahti moves to table the request and to direct, direct it to, to refer it to the Department of the Assessor's Office as well as the.
Second, Sirdike.
Maflahti tables the request and refer to assessor. Muflahe tables the request and refer to assessor in law department, Sirdike seconds the request. Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. City assessor requests city council approve the sale of the city-owned property located at two thirty one Ridge Road to the community health center of Buffalo. Muflahe moves to approve the request. Are we going to do that separately or?
We can do it separately.
Muflahe moves to approve the request. Muflahe approves request, Anderson seconds the approval. Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. City assessor requests city council approve the sale of the city-owned property located at two two nine Ridge Road to the community health center of Buffalo. Muflahe moves to approve the request. Muflahe approves, seconded Anderson to approve request. Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Director of purchasing requests city council approve the new way energy for gas and electric. Director city council to authorize the mayor to sign said proposal.
Right, I'm going to approve request, mayor authorized the sign proposal and thanks to Mr. Nicko Meadow for his efforts.
Second, sir.
Moved by Morano, seconded by Sirdike. Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Director of public safety requests city council approve the sale of an old filed fire department vehicle, nineteen ninety one Spartan bumper.
Right, I'm going to approve request. Moretti second.
Morano approves request, seconded by Moretti. Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Kevin Pagli, I president Lackawanna Little Loop, request city council approve the use of veteran stadium for football and cheerleading practice by Lackawanna Little Loop. Insurance has been provided.
Right, I'm going to approve request, refer to DPW commissioner and director of public safety.
Muflahe seconds. Moved by Morano, seconded by Muflahe. Um, Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Denise Abbott, Abbott president, Buffalo Central Labor Council, request city council approve use of Dorns Avenue and McKinley Parkway. For the twenty twenty three L.A. parade, all petitions, permits, and insurance have been filed.
Right, I'm going to approve request, refer to director of public safety, Department of Public Works.
Muflahe seconds. Moved by Morano, seconded by Muflahe. Um, Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Uh, request waive the rules.
Right, I'm going to waive, waive the rules.
Muflahe seconds. Moved by Morano, seconded by Muflahe. Uh, Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. William Taggart Jr. requests approval for the closure of Stony Street from the West End, which is Willett Avenue to one twenty one Stony Street for school supply giveaway in Gunders. Muflahe moves to approve the request, refer to director of public safety and DPW commissioner.
Right, I'm seconds. Twenty six. Yeah, it was in his communication, I don't know what's not.
Moved by Muflahe, seconded by Morano to approve request, refer to director of public safety. Carried, um, Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Business registration Nancy Brand, DBA Brandon Moots, Ursula on at fourteen fifty three Abbott Road. Muflahe moves to approve business registration.
Moretti second.
Moved by Muflahe, seconded by Moretti to approve business registration. Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Join me?
No, moving the table, the items and open business, um, before I open that up to the council, uh, Linda, uh, our city comptroller, if if you could give us an update, the, on a, a couple of funds. The, sometime ago, and I, I think I have it in front of me, back in August of twenty twenty two, I believe, you requested that we secure a new software system to replace the, uh, Edmonds system because it was deficient and, um, and and not responsive to the city's needs and 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 secure Tyler Technologies to replace that with their proposal. What is the status of that situation as of today?
Well, um, we're waiting to have a conversation with Tyler Technologies with the law department. There was a switch, a bait and switch situation that I think I had mentioned previously with that software. Um, and the software that they were planning on installing was not the software they demoed. And that was, um, stopped as soon as that was determined back in February. And I've been working with Rick and the mayor since then, and we're looking at other softwares. I'm waiting on another quote that I thought would have by Friday, but I did not get it. Um, so as soon as I get information on that, I will let you know.
And how much has the city paid to Tyler to date, do you know?
Under twenty thousand. I've held the rest of the bills.
Has, have we received the bill since then?
We received a couple right after I told them to stop working. They did not stop, um, and that's why the bills haven't been paid.
Is it my understanding that we recently received a, an invoice for a hundred thousand dollars from them?
If we have, I have not seen it.
Okay, thanks. Now, um, back in October of twenty twenty two, Linda, you requested that, um, the council approved funding for an independent audit. What is the status of that audit today?
Um, we're working on audit prep and the auditors are scheduled to come in on August twenty first.
What took so long?
Edmonds and, um, recording and procedural errors having to be researched and fixed.
Yeah, I I don't understand. The independent audit is what it says it is, it's an independent audit. Why would an independent audit be dependent on other entities to cooperate with them? Don't they just come in and examine the books? My, my understanding was there was a question of communication between, say, for instance, the treasurer's office and, and the comptroller's office. So what, what does Edmonds have to do with this?
It wasn't a matter of communication. Um, it was deficiencies in how things were being recorded and how Edmonds was transferring that information into the general ledger.
Okay, this approval was almost ten months ago.
Yes.
What is the delay on that?
The, the information on Edmonds has to be compared line by line against the transactions in the treasurer's office.
Okay, so why wouldn't, why wouldn't the independent auditor come in and do that?
They wouldn't do that. They look at the reconciliation. If it doesn't reconcile, we get a negative determination, which is what I've been trying to prevent.
That makes no, that makes, that makes no sense to me. If if there's, say, for instance, there's a forensic audit, doesn't, doesn't the auditor come in, look at all the paperwork, the, the numbers that are generated at a particular starting point, and how those numbers are relayed to the ultimate ledger, which is in your office? Why is that dependent on another entity, Edmonds, supplying any information to an independent auditor?
Edmonds isn't supplying any information to the auditor.
Then why is the auditor conducting its audit?
Because the information in the treasurer's office doesn't reconcile with what's in the bank statements.
But isn't that their obligation to reconcile that?
No, it's their obligation to determine if we can reconcile it. They don't do the work for us.
You have to forgive me. I, I'm not an accountant, but that makes no sense to me. We hired, we authorized the hiring ten months ago of an independent audit that is being thwarted because we don't have information to assist the independent auditor, is that it?
Correct. We don't have information reconciled for them to give us a determination.
So they can't do the independent audit?
They can, but we would receive a negative determination, which would.
What is a negative determination?
That would mean that our records don't reconcile with what is being recorded by the treasurer's office.
Okay, which is why we brought in the independent auditor, correct?
The independent auditor does our financial statements.
No, I, I, I'm having a problem with this. We asked for an independent audit so that we could determine where the problems lie, the extent of the problems, and how to remedy those. But now you're saying to me that.
You're talking about the audit prep, where I had the, the old auditing firm come in and help us try to reconcile? Is that what you referred to back in August?
I'm talking about your letter that I have in front of me from October eleventh, twenty twenty two. It says, Dear Honorable Body, I request, Mayor Renetti, I follow, attached police finding proposal from Allied CPA's PC formerly known as Amato Fox, which is respectfully submitted here with, for your review and consideration.
Amato Fox did come in, and that was for audit prep, helping us get ready for the, for the financial audit.
Who, who did the financial audit?
That is, um, EFPR or EFRP, I.
EFPR.
EFPR. Um, Allied came in and they looked at my records and compared it against what was in Edmonds and against the treasurer's records. And they agreed with my finding that there was a huge difference and they couldn't reconcile it further. So I've been trying to reconcile it since then.
So there has been an independent audit?
It wasn't really an audit. It was.
But I, I'm using your terms.
It was an old auditing firm helping us prepare for audit.
What is an old auditing, auditing firm?
That would be Allied Fox, they, before EFPR.
You mean a prior auditing firm?
Yes. And they were familiar with us, and that's why it was recommended that they come in.
Okay, so did they perform their services?
They did.
Did they charge us?
Yes.
How much was that, do you know?
Um, I believe it was about twelve thousand. I ca, I can't remember the exact amount. I'd have to go back and look.
Cause I, I believe we allocated up to five thousand.
Then it wasn't twelve thousand. It was a little bit over that because they did so much more work trying to get it resolved.
The only other question I have is, um, it's come to my attention that there is a, a, a new, new individual in the comptroller's office?
Yes.
And who is that?
Sapphire Business Systems.
And, and.
That's, that's another consultant.
And who hired them?
Um, it wasn't hired, but we contracted them. We are.
Uh, how are we paying them?
We're paying them out of our software line.
Were they authorized to be hired?
There was a memo done with consultation with purchasing, the mayor, and I gave a copy to legal on, on how we met the procurement policy and contracting them, yes.
Doesn't the council have to approve any hirings?
Not under those situations.
So the, so who actually hired the, that firm?
I think the mayor signed the agreement, but I was the one that recommended them.
So the mayor signed the agreement without council approval?
Yes, based on the recommendations and the memo I put together, yes.
Uh, I'm going to ask the law department for an opinion on this?
I haven't seen, I, I, if, if, if it was given to me, I, I certainly don't recall looking at it. Um, so I, I'd need some time to review it and get back to the council.
How much time?
A couple of days at least.
Okay.
You know, I could, I can get back to you this week, but I would have to look at that.
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing, um, we, we're approving these expenditures and, and nobody's communicating with the council. We approve for an independent audit. I had asked on several occasions, including at immediate, immediate meetings and independently, what is the status of the audit? I was never given a straight answer. No, it's not an audit, it's, it's a reconciliation. So I'm, I'm just thoroughly confused.
I don't think I was ever asked those questions.
We have, um, we, we have the, this Tyler organization that has, has come to my attention that we were just received the bill of a hundred thousand dollars, which may, we may be on the hook for, because we approved over a million dollar authorization over a ten year period to this Tyler. Now granted, there may be some legalities here as to what they represented and what they delivered, and I understand that. But now we're still incurring bills from Tyler. Edmonds system, if I'm using their term, their name correctly, is still, we're still using that. And then we had this independent audit that we authorized and, and we've never received any results of, of that, the results of that effort is, and, and what the effort even entailed.
I didn't get a written determination, but I, I could share with you the results of that.
Well, wouldn't that be appropriate since we approved the expenditure? There was a concern as to, after having to have an independent audit, and, and those were your terms, to keep everybody, uh, uh, safe as far as, you know, the communication and, and what's being entered and whether it's being entered appropriately, but, and then it just, business goes on as usual and we don't know what we approved and, and how it was spent and, and where we stand today with any of these issues. We've got, we have Edmonds who's on the line for the old system. We have Tyler who's on the line for the new system. And now I believe, Linda, you indicated that you are seeking, uh, requests on, on additional software. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
So we haven't resolved Tyler, we haven't resolved Edmonds, but you're looking for another software?
Well, I've been waiting on Tyler to get resolved for seven months and I'm dealing with deficiencies in an accounting system every day that are taking a large portion of time and money and effort to resolve. And I know a program that I've used before that will deal with a lot of our issues and stop the bleeding, which is what I need to do at this point in time.
Why wouldn't, why weren't, wasn't that?
I wouldn't think that would be something you'd want to discuss in an open forum. Um, I.
I didn't know it was not for, for our discussion.
Well, I, I don't know. I just wish someone would have maybe come and talked to me. I could have shared more of the details. I wasn't aware that questions were being asked and not answered.
I guess before Edmonds was initiated, the software that you're referring to, why wasn't that an option prior to Edmonds?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The, okay, so we approved the Edmonds, um, software, I'm sorry, Tyler. However, you said there is a new software that you have worked with.
What happened is the program that bought Munis, Tyler Technologies, stopped giving it out. So it's a program that works great, but they stopped selling it and we can't get it right now. And they lied and said we could.
You know, the one that you said you've worked with in the past that you want to give now, why wasn't that an option prior?
Because it doesn't handle the tax or the credit card functions. So I'm going to still have to find something for that, but I know it'll handle GL. I know it'll handle payroll. I know it'll handle purchase orders and it'll handle budgeting. And that's at least something to stop the bleeding at this point in time.
But it'll still leave us in the negative as far as transactions for credit cards?
No, because as it stands right now, as of March thirty, March twenty first, I review every transaction every day that comes from the treasurer's office and the credit card, and I do journal entries to fix the mistakes every day. So from three twenty one to now, I know that the general ledger is correct.
But it would still be deficient, the program that.
It's not deficient. It will just not handle tax and credit card functions.
Which are important.
Which is what I'm doing and reconciling manually every day. Yes, it's important, but I gotta stop the bleeding somewhere.
Okay, so, uh, okay, let's go to the credit card situation. The credit card situation, using the, use of credit cards started when, do we know?
It was started before I started here. I don't know the day.
So it was in existence before you started?
Yes.
Did the Edmonds program address deficiencies in that credit card, uh, function?
As of July seventh, or I'm sorry, August seventh, they did.
August seventh of this year?
Yep.
But they didn't prior to that?
No, I've been working with them for almost a year trying to get that resolved.
Okay. Was Tyler's program supposed to address that?
Yes.
Credit card? And, and that wasn't done?
No.
So how much have we paid Ed, Edmonds? So how much have we paid Edmonds during this time period?
I think the total for all functions for two years amounted to about eighteen thousand.
And again, the individual who's also working in your office is from where?
Sapphire Business Systems.
And we paid what to them so far?
I don't know if it's eight, nine thousand.
And how much more work do they have to do?
I think the total estimate they gave us for everything was about twenty, twenty-five thousand, but I'd have to look at it. I wasn't prepared, prepared to discuss that today.
And their target assignment is what?
Taking every transaction from the treasurer's office and the credit cards, line by line, and comparing it against the bank statement and trying to reconcile it.
So in addition to your reconciling and examining each one of those entries, they are also doing that?
My reconciliation, and when Allied CPAs came in, there was a discrepancy of close to six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That is why I called in this company, who not only know accounting, they know programming, and they can do a program that would compare the two for me, which is what they've been doing day by day. And it takes about four days to reconcile one month. That's how many activities there are that have to be broken down line by line, and that's not even taking into consideration the errors in recording that we've been dealing with in the treasurer's office. That's just reconciling what equals.
Okay. And just so I understand, the arrangement now that you have with Edmonds, that they can now address the credit card situation, when does their system take over from Allied or whoever, Sapphire or whoever is up in your office then reconciling?
Their program is what we're using.
Sapphire's program?
No, Edmonds. Sapphire is reconciling because it's not being recorded properly in the GL.
All right, well, Rick, if you can give me that information, I'd appreciate it. I just have too many questions here. Anyone else have any questions on this issue?
Mr. Morano, we launched credit card payments in June of twenty twenty-one, just for your information.
I appreciate that.
That's what we originally launched.
All right, anybody else have any open business or?
Sure.
Yes.
The update on the ATVs dirt bike situation and stiffer penalties that we're talking about last month.
The ATVs, I think I showed most of the council. We got our first track ATV for the police department in last week. It's now in the process of being all decked out with all the good stuff in it, so that'll be ready to go this fall, this winter. Fire department has another one they just ordered, and I believe the police department might have, might have ordered their second one already.
My question's more to stiffer penalties we were talking about, the consequences for doing that. Do we bring that up?
So can I point out a couple things? One is, I was prosecuting vehicle and traffic matters one weekend when my assistant was on vacation. I did have one individual come in, had probably twelve tickets, and I indicated to that individual that he wasn't going to get his vehicle back, and he said he didn't care, he didn't want it back. He actually cooperated and provided me with some additional information. But it's our position now that, and I've explained this to the assistant city attorney, when we prosecute the underlying traffic tickets, we're not going to offer any plea unless they agree and put on the record that they're going to give up any rights to the vehicle if it wasn't pounded.
And we've confiscated two more since the first one.
Yeah. Two more ATVs. Then we don't need any laws, stiffer laws, is that what you're saying?
Well, I think we have the laws, it's just enforcing them.
Okay.
Vehicle and traffic laws apply, and, you know, the one individual had equipment violations and, you know, everything from going through stop signs to, you know.
So what happens to those vehicles?
I'm going to guess they're going to get auctioned off, but that's not going to just happen.
So where are they now?
Probably still at the, we're hard to disclose the location the last time they stole them back. They're in a secured location.
They're in a better secured location.
Yeah, no.
That's something that's going to have to be determined because certainly we don't, you know, we don't want to confiscate vehicles, and then people end up going back to the auction and buying their own vehicle back or whatever. It's senseless.
Yeah, I don't know exactly. We haven't run into it yet, so we really don't know. The other thing is there are some legalities, I would imagine. When people want their, you know, when the parents come, some of these kids are younger, the parents-
After a certain amount of time, we're going to, you know, we'll look into this, but probably our recommendation is going to be after a certain amount of time that they're going to be destroyed. Because quite honestly, I don't care if the city gets two hundred and fifty dollars for a-
The only other thing I would, you know, not even a suggestion, but if you, if the council or Legal was looking into anything, it would probably be hiking up the fines like Buffalo did. They hiked it up big time.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we talked about, so, all right. And as long as we have, Mr. Clark here, I don't mean to blindside, is there anything going on with the Lincoln School property? Morano, we got a lot of irons in the fire, but I just wondered, I haven't heard anything about that in a while.
That one, that one hasn't been marketed actively, but it is the next one up.
Okay.
So two sixty-four is number one, one other donor next.
No problem, I'm just wondering.
Okay, thank you. Is there a proposal for a mixed use on that property?
The, well, actually, I'm going to be talking with Paul DeOrlando from Erie County next week. The grant funding that was used to clean up the old Lincoln School slash friendship house site required for a specific period of time, that if anything was developed on that site, it had to be a particular housing complex. I believe that limitation expires sometime this year, but that's the information I'm going to be meeting with Paul on, because Paul was involved in that grant process with us, and anybody else who was involved is scum.
What about core samples, was that done there?
Yeah, that was, that site was remedied, so that is, that is, that's what I'm talking about. The funding that was used to clean, to demolish and clean up the land so that it was developable had a condition on it that it had to be an affordable housing complex, and that condition, I believe, was till the end of twenty twenty-four, but don't hold me on that. That's what the meeting with Paul is going to clarify for me. Once that, if that condition is expired, then it will allow us to do whatever development we want within the appropriate zoning of that.
Oh, okay. I get it. Wink, wink, all right.
No, no wink, wink.
No, I know, I know.
All right, anyone else? If not, and as the council bear with me, I'm going to request that we adjourn this meeting in the memory of a very dear friend of mine. We grew up together in the first ward and kept in touch with each other all these years. My good and dear friend Thomas Heaslip, who just passed away on Saturday, I would like to adjourn this meeting in his memory. Thank you.
Moved by Morano, seconded and all to adjourn meeting, carry, Muflahe?
Yes.
Anderson?